Okay, well, I've got 5:03, so I'm gonna go ahead and open the meeting.
I have to go find my cellphone. I think it's downstairs. I will be right back.
Okay. Mike Borowski is, has joined us and. Is this about the tree?
I think we're gonna deal with 134 Christian after the public hearing. I think we're gonna start with a.
Well, this is just, this is just a quick question.
It's related to that, though, Don. You sure?
Yeah, it does, but all, all they're asking is that we allow them to move that tree on their own. And I think that's something that we can handle right away.
I see. So we may have a longer conversation after the public hearing.
Yes.
About the landscaping.
Right.
This concerns, this specifically concerns the newly planted evergreen tree.
Right.
Okay, so, and, and so I'd like to hear this before 5:15. Because if, if anyone other than Nexamp was gonna move a tree planted by Nexamp, I'd like to understand the communication plan around that.
Mike, you wanna go over that?
No.
I'm sorry, Mike Borowski.
It's Michelle.
Oh.
It's Michelle and Tom.
No, I'm Tom.
Tom, that's right. Okay.
Um, I, I don't care about the tree. I was asked by Skip if he could move the tree further down. He misunderstood and said, "onto my land." "I don't want it on my land." They can move it down, they can move it wherever they want on their land. Doesn't matter to me.
Okay.
I have an opinion.
The whole point of that tree, the location, was to use it as screening. So moving it around randomly is not the goal. It's gotta be.
Yeah, this is why I wanted to discuss it. This is why I wanted to discuss it with the landscape plan, because it's tied in with the other trees that aren't there.
Okay, good. So basically, the point, Tom, is that you're, you're conveying verbally to the planning board today that Nexamp does not have your permission to move that evergreen tree into, you know, onto your land.
No, no, they got plenty of land, they got plenty of space to do. It's on my land now. Shouldn't we moved a few feet over? I talked, I had a conversation with Jeff the other day. And he says, you know, "get it off your land." I don't know why it's on your land. And I was like, "all right, whatever." We can do whatever they want.
Their land.
On their land.
Yeah.
That's where I got in trouble the first time.
All right, all right. So we'll, we'll integrate that into our discussion later this evening about the broader, how we're going to deal with landscaping and everything that they've done or not done on their land.
Thank you.
And I don't know that we need the Boraskis to stay unless they wanna enjoy the proceedings.
Right, anything else we wanna discuss in the next seven minutes?
Well, I think we could cover the floodplain bylaw update in that time.
Yes, please.
After our meeting, which was very informative, I think the planning board learned probably more than the public did. I spent some time with Peggy Sloan, and she agreed with my assessment. As did, I believe, Hannah, that we weren't ready to go to town meeting. We didn't have enough information. Also, it seemed precipitate to go to town meeting if, in fact, new maps were gonna come out next summer. When we'd have to then go and re-vote everything again, so. So. We step back. Hannah and I talked, and then she and I met with Brian Domina. He. He has a planning background, as you know, he's a lawyer. We talked about the agricultural exemption sum. And he pointed out that it permits reasonable regulation and presumably, presumably floodplain regulation is reasonable, although one never knows. Also, there's a sentence in the, in the exemption about, that seems to carve out floodplain regulations. But of course, being in that section of the state laws isn't very specific or as precise as one would like. He is going to ask town council for his opinion on that. And I don't think he expects a very precise answer, but anyway, we are consulting with town council. And Hannah is going to contact the health department experts and get more information about septic. So that's, that's the plan.
And as I recall, we're, the, you know, the, the hammer or the sword of Damocles is the potential loss of access to the federal flood insurance program. But we, I gather, we have quite, you know, not an unlimited amount of time. We have a fair amount of running room, so that if we don't do this, you know, this year at town meeting, next year's town meeting is still timely enough? Is that correct?
She said, "I don't know." This is, this is, the guidance here has changed. Continue. First, first it had to be done before the end of 2021, then it had to be done by town meeting in 2022. Now. What I heard her say is that it doesn't absolutely have to be done until the FEMA maps come out. And then I assume you have a window, but. So that's, if, I'm sorry, Hannah, I keep talking over you.
Just gonna say that's correct.
Yeah.
Good. So we've got time to get it right. And there was, I did find that the public education session very educational as well. And the interaction with the Conservation Commission about promulgating regulations. So Judy, do you anticipate that some of the work to be done is to sort of draft up, you know, collaborate with Conservation Commission around these regulations? Or what do you see as the major steps to be ready for?
I think that would happen, but I think the way, the way Scott phrased it, it was, you, you don't do that till after you have the bylaw. But I think you might have representative kinds of regulations to talk to people about. It shouldn't be too hard. They wouldn't, wouldn't intend to be comprehensive at that point, which is.
Okay, good. Cause obviously, as you, you heard so many questions that were really about process, right? And it seemed like we weren't quite ready to give the kind of answers that.
No, we're not at all. And. And also, Brian has still a enforcement issue with whether the building inspector should, should be the enforcement person or not. And, and so that, that's another issue that we tabled. We, it wasn't relevant for the educational session, but will be for, for the drafting of the final bylaw.
Sounds good to me.
We could approve the three-year term for planning board members.
Oh, yeah. So what's that? Again, what was that about? In the last, there was a, a send of email that I saw that said that they were giving everyone, or you're all supposed to have five-year terms. And then there was pushback, and now I hear the town moderator has decided to make all these terms, planning board member terms three years. Is that right, Judy? There's some things that happened that I didn't see.
Yeah, he. Let me step back. I'm on my fifth three-year term. We have, we have always assumed that it was a three-year term. Amy read the bylaw and discovered it was five and wanted to adjust everybody's terms. And that didn't seem quite fair when we all thought we were on three-year terms. And I think, I talked to Nat, and he agreed that he thought it would be very difficult to recruit people for five-year terms. And so he agreed to submit a bylaw change. And it will be on the warrant. And passage would be helped if we voted to approve it.
Okay. Is this just for the planning board or all town boards?
It's just the planning board.
Okay.
I mean, literally, he's changing the term. He's taking away five and replacing it with three is the.
Okay, and you weren't advocating for 15-year terms.
You better watch yourself.
All right, so is there, are you making a motion, Judy?
I will move that we support the general bylaw and that it changes planning board terms from five years to three.
If Sarah seconded it.
I think there was three.
Right.
Is there any further discussion? Here, and I'll call for a vote. Tom?
Yes.
Don, aye. Judy?
Aye.
Brad?
Yes.
And Sarah?
Aye.
We are unanimous.
Okay. All right, so it shall be recorded in the minutes.
Is anyone else on here for, other than what's on the agenda? We got anything informal that would needs to be discussed? All right, well, my clock says 5:15 right now, so I'm gonna open the public hearing on the bylaw change for Merrill, adding marijuana delivery, trucking and services, rezone parcel 12.024.2 on State Road.
And I'm standing by to share screen with any of the material Judy circulated, and that's also, I think, posted.
Well, I'll do it in order, so we'll bring up the zoning bylaw change for marijuana first.
Sure. Let me share my screen. And I think it's all in this one document that you should be able to see. So what are we starting with, Don? I apologize.
Modify the marijuana bylaw.
Okay, very good.
You're right at the right place.
Maybe I'll make the text a little smaller, so more will.
Okay.
Basically, it's all on the second page.
Yeah.
Yes, totally.
All right.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Sorry, I'm just trying to get this. All right, who's ever talking should either mute themselves or. All right. Okay, so this is this one to modify the marijuana bylaw as follows. So Judy, you wanna take us all through the spirit and wording of the changes?
These are two types of licenses that are new since, since we passed the original marijuana bylaw. And they both involve a delivery of marijuana products to retail people, to cus, funnel customers. There are. There are two types. One is delivery, is called marijuana delivery. That's the second one there. And it's basically a business where somebody goes to the wholesaler, picks up an order to be delivered to the customer. And period. They don't take any of this back to their, to their place of business. They, they are purely delivery people. Or maybe have I cut them backwards? I've got them backwards. The courier is just, just delivering. The first one, just delivering. The delivery one is this essentially the same thing. They purchase at wholesale, but they can store and repackage and have a warehouse, so they can relabel and, and then deliver the goods. So they cannot, they have to deliver directly to the customer. They can't operate a storefront. But they can have.
Judy, they can not repackage it, actually. They can only buy finished stuff and deliver it.
Yeah, they can label, they can relabel it. They can label and sell and deliver, and they can store it. And if you scroll down, so those are the definitions. If you scroll down to the table of use, and the table of use is the part of our bylaws that explains what districts, what zoning districts you can have, what businesses in. And each of these businesses would be allowed only in commercial, commercial, industrial, and industrial, and they would all require special permits. They have the same setback requirements that the other marijuana businesses do. I think they are probably less intrusive than, than say, a marijuana retail business or a manufacturing business for that matter. And that's about all I have to say.
So let me just summarize at least for my own benefit. So one, one thing that we're proposing and seeking public feedback on is we're adding these two definitions to the zoning bylaws. These two definitions don't currently exist in the bylaws, correct, Judy?
Correct, and neither of these businesses is allowed, is currently allowed in town.
That's right. So the intent of all of this is to permit these two kinds of businesses, marijuana couriers and marijuana delivery establishments to operate in town. And so we're doing that by adding these definitions and revising the table of use to explicitly list them, because by their absence, they would be prohibited by default. So we're adding them as permitted uses, but we're restricting them to where, where they're prohibited in the AR1 and AR2 districts. They're permitted in the other three, commercial, commercial, industrial, industrial, but they require a spec, to, to operate, they would first need a special permit from the ZBA.
Yeah, I think the way to say it is, they would be permitted if they get a special permit.
That's right. And I, as I recall, Judy, we add an asterisk in these tables if a planning board review is also required. Am I confused about that, or would they also be required to get planning board, go through a site plan approval by the planning board?
Yes, they would be required to have site plan approval. We put that asterisk in for agricultural, for special agricultural uses that would normally not have site plan review.
Okay.
Agriculture's nor, normally exempt, but all commercial and commercial, industrial and industrial projects always require a site plan review. So, yes, these would require a site plan review.
Very good. Okay. So I think this is the chance for members of the public to ask questions or make comments on this particular proposed change.
Can I ask you to scroll back down again, so I could read the second one? It seems more like it's marijuana DoorDash that you're allowing. Marijuana delivery. Am I, am I reading that correctly? So they're.
Courier one is the DoorDash.
Yeah, the courier.
So that, so if I'm understanding how these would be applied, is you would have a business that would allow, there would be no onsite. I'm, I'm trying to understand how it would be applied.
Yeah.
So, Rich, is that somebody in town, if they had land on an industrial or commercial, could set up a vis, business to do that. People can already get DoorDash type stuff, because I know that the North Hampton, North Hampton one is already doing that. And we don't have any regulations against it.
That's a very important point. That came up, a, a related question came up from, you know, there, Waitley does not have any general bylaws that regulate the delivery of marijuana to residents in town. As, you know, if those businesses are operating out of, outside Waitley. Right, so you courier services in, say, Hatfield or North Hampton, they can operate, they can courier things to Waitley, from Waitley, make deliveries to it. That would be a general bylaw matter versus a zoning bylaw matter. What we're doing with the zoning bylaws is making it possible for these two kinds of establishments to operate in town. Have land, set up businesses, and operate in town.
I should have also said that these businesses have very, have the same extensive state regulation that the other marijuana businesses do. And especially the delivery one for their wholesaling. Where the, where there may be marijuana on site, has the whole security. The, the same kind of security requirements that, that both retailers and cultivators and manufacturers have. But that these people are required for their drivers, that they, they have Corey checks and security clearances. And the, the operators of the businesses are required to go through the same kind of approvals and licensing that, that the other marijuana establishments have.
If I can jump in here, it doesn't look like there's any language in the bylaw to assess the amount of traffic that's going to be added to Route 5 in the neighborhood, nor the hours of operation during these activities. Is there any consideration for that?
Those would be covered with a site plan review.
But it doesn't sound like there is a site plan review with these.
Yeah, there is a site plan review.
Sorry if I muddy those waters, Rich. They, what Judy clarified is that for any project, whether it's these listed here in, or, but any, any commercial, commercial, industrial, or industrial project in Waitley requires a site plan review.
The new building or. The state limits the hours of operation to, I think it's 7:00 AM to 8:00 PM. The town could limit it more than that.
But does the town have the authority to do such, or language?
Yeah, so, yes.
So.
Yeah, sure, that's part of the, the.
Rich, any, any new building or any change of use in any building always requires a site plan review.
Got it. It just seems that over the, being in other meetings, I realized that there, it, it seems like the planning board is limited to how much restriction it's able or willing to put on a, a business. And it's in, and that business's impact on the environment when it comes to, you know, traffic and stuff. There are some things that you obviously do get involved with, but this seems like the leniency is more towards the business than the residential community.
Well, the fact of the matter is that we can, we cannot deny a site plan review. All we can do is modify it to make it the best.
Condition, condition.
Sorry, condition it.
I mean, though I, I suppose it's true that we can deny a site plan review if the plan is somehow in violation of zoning bylaws. But where I think we get into these gray areas is where a plan appears to be compliant with zoning bylaws. But then there's, you know, variations of opinion about whether an otherwise allowable business ought to be allowed to operate in town or whether we can or should impose other restrictions on them for health and safety and welfare and things like that.
But for most, for the most part, the, the planning board, zoning board of appeals can actually not approve a special permit. And they're the ones that have actually more power as far as you were concerned about, Rich, than, than we do.
I'm just trying to understand why we're, why the town is putting this in. If it, is there has been a request to modify the bylaws to allow for something?
No, first, go ahead, Judy.
You answer that, Don, and then I'll.
Are you started, you started saying.
Well, I wanted to finish up on the, on the, on the previous one. I checked the marijuana bylaw, and the bylaw itself, the main marijuana bylaw, says that all marijuana operations have to operate between 7:00 AM, can't exceed the, the hours of 7:00 AM to 8:00 PM. And I'm sure that could be limited below that. So if you wanted to answer this question, Don.
Restate the question, Rich.
Well, I was trying to, why these were being modified and added into bylaws in the first place? Was there a request to do so?
Um, these two courier and delivery are, are relatively new. And if we don't put in, add them to our use of regulations, then we will have no way to block or modify any plans.
But if they're not included, then they can't utilize them in the first.
No, I, I think the, Rich, the motivation is that these seem to be reasonable businesses for the town. And we would not want to discourage a viable business opportunity if it's properly controlled.
I would agree that, you know, that town, adding more business within the town to a reasonable extent is absolutely appropriate. But I wanna, my concern as a resident, longtime resident, is that what does it do to the character? I mean, are we gonna allow ourselves to become Route 9 and Hadley, or, or then some? Or are we going to try to contain a certain amount of small-town flair to our residential atmosphere on Route 5? Cause there is some. To what extent are we opening the doors and changing the character altogether? And, you know, when I grew up as a kid, we, Route 5 was a scenic route. Now it's no longer that. And to what extent is that gonna perpetuate? And how these bylaws reflect that is my concern as a citizen here. You know, like the trucking, construction, equipment services. But, you know, we get a lot more trucks going down the road, and, and it's obtrusive. There's a lot more going on. And all that additional noise is concerning. And so that's why, those are the things that I'm concerned about, being, unless you can regulate the hours of operation on trucking, it makes it really hard for, as a resident on Route 5 to be in support of it. I understand.
Well, again, this is, this is delivery to residences.
Right, but also.
And I think of all, I think it's comparatively a very, very unobtrusive kind of business, that the trucks would be presumably out on the road all day. Um, they're not gonna show up at somebody's house before.
Right, but you also have trucking and construction equipment services added to the.
We aren't there, we're not there yet.
Oh, I see, okay.
We're talking about the marijuana, the two marijuana ones.
Anyone else have any questions about this marijuana? I'll entertain a motion to.
If, if you, how is this different than the, the delivery services that operate now, say, Amazon Prime and FedEx? There, there's no hourly restrictions on how they can operate in town, is there?
No.
So, they're delivering in town, though. They're not delivering from town.
They're not operating under the marijuana bylaw. And as, as Rich said, they're not operating from town.
Yeah, so again, it's worth restating that the zoning bylaws, and these in particular, are applying to owners and operators of business within the borders of Waitley. Owners and operators of business within the borders of Waitley. So with Amazon were to set up a uh. An operation within Waitley from which they did um, delivery. Then zoning bylaws could apply to the establishment of that Amazon business. Of course, we're not, Amazon is not gonna be delivering marijuana. But however, the town has general bylaws separate and apart from the zoning bylaws that regulate things like. What, what can happen within the town? And there are some towns that have bylaws that regulate. The hours during which things like marijuana could be delivered to residents in town. Waitley does not have any general bylaws at present that. That regulate that, and such bylaws are not the purview of the planning board anyway.
So I guess the answer is this, this type of delivery service is much more controlled than those. Both at the state level with the way they're. The way they have to operate and because of our marijuana operate by law because of, of that and the zoning.
Can I ask this question? How, uh, what's to regulate the number of businesses that would proceed in this manner? I mean, are we still at three businesses in town? I think it was that allowed uh, to. Um, utilize marijuana as a production or sale? I'm trying to understand how this.
The limit is only on retail operations.
So there's no limit on wholesale? We could have ten wholesalers that are selling out of Waitley?
Could, but as a practical matter, it seems highly unlikely that.
But we could.
Wouldn't the answer to that be similar to why couldn't we have twenty-five self-storage facilities operating in town?
It's the same question. Yes, I understand.
Yeah, there's no, no regulation of that except the broader market. It, it's certainly not the. If twenty-five different um. Operators of self-storage bought land and wanted to operate.
Are, are there any um, regulations that uh. Proceed this that allow for the, or regulate the type of uh, business or type of uh, environment that they can deliver from. Out of. Is it the same criteria is used for um, um, retail marijuana sales?
I don't understand the question, Rich.
When, when they're putting the retail marijuana sales in town, um, there are criteria associated to hours of operation. Setbacks, um.
Yeah, all this, all those apply.
All those do apply the same.
This is, this is, these are literally inserted in the marijuana bylaw. That um, determines that. And I just read you the hours of operation from that.
But they do apply the hours of operation apply to these, also these businesses as well.
Yeah.
And I do think the, the general point Rich is bringing up about. What businesses can or should be allowed in town is an, you know, interesting philosophical one. I note that the zoning bylaws do take stands on certain kinds of businesses that are explicitly not allowed in town. Car washes, for example, all springs to mind and. What was that?
Pig farms.
Pig farms, dry cleaning establishments. Um, when I came onto the planning board a little over a year ago, it was sort of impressed upon me that the. Mission of the planning board is to try to balance. You know, the protection of the health and the welfare and the well-being of the citizens lately with some economic development goals to broaden the tax base. Um, strengthen your talent and so forth. So I'm sure there, there are judge differences of opinion about. When and under what conditions should the town, you know. Become more, you know, open up to new kinds of businesses. I think the sense of the planning board so far, you know, pending. Feedback from, you know, you and others in town is that. Allowing for marijuana courier operations and marijuana delivery operations set up in town seemed like something. See, those seem to, at least seem to me that. I'm open to seeing those kind of businesses enter town and become part of our tax base and so forth. And it was my assessment that the impact on the citizens wouldn't be, would be. Would be net beneficial to the town versus harmful. And that's why we have these public hearings to get a sense of just how people feel about that.
What, if, if I were to comment on your response there, the net benefit to somebody living up. Uh, in town away from Route Five is, uh, there's a gain because they don't ever, they're never exposed to the traffic. They're never exposed to the environment. They're never. Involved in it unless they drive through, but those folks who live on Route Five, myself and many others. Um, you know, we're directly exposed to it. So, you know, we're paying the same tax base as everyone else. We should have the same benefit. And not have to take the burden of adding all that additional traffic and. I understand that, you know, because we're in a commercial zone. Wait, there, there's a certain amount of uh, responsibility we have to endure and shoulder. But on the same token, there needs to also be a, a consideration for how any. Bylaw change can accelerate to the point where it makes it on, you know, relatively unlivable in, uh, in this particular environment.
Well, that was one reason we picked these two because they seem to be quite unobtrusive. Um, if, if for a commercial use in an area that's owned commercially. Compared to say, uh, a large retail facility or, or something.
I think Rich is trying to control how much traffic can go up and down Route Five. And then there's nothing that we can do about that. Haydenville Road. Haydenville Road has got exactly the same problem. I've got. A truck going by my house all hours of day and night and. Uh. Lumber trucks coming down and using their Jake brakes. I mean, you've got nothing against compared to uh. It's anything worse than Haydenville Road is right now.
We've got more than our share of trucks with Jake brakes too.
You don't live at the bottom of a hill.
At a sharp corner where everybody's slowing down for it. I, 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 I realize that, you know, there are other places that take a certain amount of burden, uh, just as a, as a. Longtime way of the president, seeing the town change considerably. I just wanted to make sure that a certain amount of character is left. Um, and that uh, any decisions that are made don't allow us to run off to make any choices that we can't back out of.
Alright, well, those don't have anything to do with what we're talking about right now. So I'm gonna close the, uh, do we wanna? Do we wanna do?
Close the hearing. We can close the discussion on marijuana, but. We need to keep the hearing.
Do you wanna do the other one?
Yeah.
Do it as two or one?
It's one hearing, has to be one hearing. We advertised one hearing.
Okay. Let's move on to the uh, trucking then.
I. Have you heard from the Monahan's? I, this was one we put up in case they found it was necessary and we weren't sure that it was.
The last I heard, and I think it was Don who circulated this around, that. The Monahan's have requested that their property, their parcel be rezoned commercial. And that. This, um, this use be allowed.
Um, actually, they, we're not concerned about the use being allowed. Cause they've got an existing situation already and, and uh. The senior Monahan's got, is doing most of his trucking wherever the heck he is.
Okay.
So in that case, I don't think we should include it. We. If they, if they. It was intended as an accommodation for them. And if they aren't specifically requesting it, then I s- I think we should just skip it.
Yes, what, one concern I have is, I, I know what's going on at the, at the. At that property. Very briefly, but. How does this apply to truck sales or servicing trucking equipment? I mean, it doesn't address that at all. You know, our bylaw has as, has a special provisions. In the use table for, for repair shops and for, for. I think it's auto repair shops and auto vehicle, auto, automobile sales and service. But does automobiles? Also include trucks?
This is unrelated to that. If, if, if we were going to bring it forward, Fred, it would permit businesses. That make their trucks available to, to work for other people.
Good, but I, I, I am on, I may be wrong, but. It, it's possible that they service trucks there, whether it's theirs or others, and what's to prevent them from selling trucks there?
Because that's not allowed. It's a business providing. Anyway, it's, it's a moot point if I, I think we probably.
Okay.
I mean, I, is there, is there any sentiment on the planning board for continuing with this if, if the Monahan's don't want it?
This is, this is Sue Monahan. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Alright. We are here, we are requesting that our property be zoned commercial. And it actually was already approved by the Attorney's General, Attorney General's office on November eighteenth, two thousand twenty-one. Our property is currently zoned commercial based on her approval. We just want to confirm that that is properly recorded through the town of Waitley.
Actually, Sue, as I told you before, that was. Approved, but the Attorney General did not approve it because of the language and for a. Uh, a mistake that was made in the advertising.
I, I do understand.
Even though the Waitley approved it. The Attorney General of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts did not approve it. And that's why we're having another hearing tonight.
Yeah, I do understand that, but actually the Attorney General did approve it and. I have confirmation from her documentation that she did. We're not looking for any type of controversy. We just want to confirm that it's all documented properly.
Does anybody have more information on this than I do? This is last I heard, the Attorney General had sent it back. And that was according to the town clerk.
I do have a copy of the map.
Go ahead.
I, I do have a copy of them that was approved on November eighteenth, two thousand twenty-one.
By who?
By the Attorney General.
Can you?
And it's on, it's on, and it's on the town of Waitley's website. And I have it printed out in front of me.
So could I just intervene here? So let me recap what I think I'm hearing from this Monahan. So you're, you're telling the planning board that you're, you have information. That, that we don't have, which is fine, from the Attorney General confirming that your parcel has been rezoned commercial. Is that correct?
Actually, no, because the information I got came from the town's website. And we confirmed it with the Attorney General.
Alright.
It's listed on the town's website on the zoning map. If you check the meeting, the meeting minutes for November, um, for last year. It's approved November eighteenth, isn't it? The piece of property that I just purchased has been approved. It was supposed to be approved. And then there was some controversy as to filing. Uh, but. In the end, it appears that it has been approved, so we just want to confirm that everything is done properly. And we're paying tax on a commercial property and that's what we expect. And anticipate. So we're just making sure that your records are correct.
Okay, well, if you can.
If not, we want it, we want it, you know, we want it approved to be commercial property.
Okay, well, that's, that was the part about rezoning the parcel. And. I.
I, I know there was an, was an issue with wording or something, the way it was filed from the town. I understand that. Um, but in the end, it was approved by the Attorney General.
The Attorney General approved all the rest of, of the. Of the votes, except that was, was our understanding.
Unfortunately, the map shows it as commercial.
Well, if you, if you call up the map, it, it includes that parcel in addition to Kyle's.
Yes, but that was based on the same information you got, that it had been approved and by the town.
It was based on the town's vote.
Right.
The Attorney General's approval.
And then about six months ago, we got. A letter from the Attorney General saying that they found a mistake. Is that true, Judy, or am I got this wrong?
That's, that's my understanding. I think.
Okay.
I think what we should do is we, we. We, we should, as we go through this, if, if you. Shoot, how do I put this? I think we should go through and put the. Put the. Change in zoning on the warrant if, if, if in fact, I mean, we had approved it before, I assume we would. Do that again, but um. And if, if you're, we can recheck that document, but I'm quite sure it says that. The other items there were approved, but not that one. And so this, this is sort of a redo to fix that.
So here's what I propose, and so if Ms. Monahan will bear with me. Um, so what I'll do is I will check in with the town clerk. Cause this, the communication around this matter is now at least half a year old. Uh, but I will as, try to establish the, the status of the rezoning. Because what I recall is that we voted to approve. In the planning board, it went before the town, the town approved it. But then all of that was sent to the Attorney General and because of uh, uh, an error in how the. The hearing had been. Uh, not fully properly advertised. In advance of town meeting, uh, the Attorney General rejected the uh, change of zoning. It is possible that the Attorney General could have rejected the change in zoning and. Through an internal miscommunication, the online zoning map was updated improperly. So I, I just want to caution you, Ms. Monahan, from looking at the online map and taking that. As uh, proof or documentation that the zoning. The rezoning to commercial for your parcel is fully approved and legitimate. And I'm gonna take it on myself and, and action for the planning board to sort out the facts here. And let everybody know what, what we believe the truth to be. However, because we're doing a public hearing tonight on the rezoning, I think it would be. Uh, wise of us to uh, basically have the public hearing tonight as if. It had failed to be approved properly last year. And then vote to approve the zoning, be ready to put this on the town meeting warrant this coming May. For, for a, a proper vote yet again. Uh, and then if it turns out between, as I researched this, that a town vote on this rezoning. This coming town meeting is not necessary, we'll simply take it off the warrant. Does that sound reasonable?
Yeah, that's completely acceptable.
Can I just say something? Th- this was brought up at the, the special town meeting, I don't know, several months ago. We talked about it. And, and my understanding was that this parcel was inadvertently omitted from. Either planning board or the Attorney General's approval and, and. To, to get approval, it had to be. Uh, presented uh, at a public hearing for the abutters to voice their concerns. And that was the whole issue that the abutters, for this parcel, not the, not everything that was proposed, but for this parcel. Were not informed because it wasn't. Were not informed because it wasn't on the agenda to be be approved. It was.
That's not quite right.
Wait a minute, wait a minute, it was, it was inadvertently omitted and it has to go back to having a public hearing. And the other point I would like to make is the map, the zoning map is not the final decision point. Of what is approved for zoning, because there are errors in the map, there are errors in the existing map that was printed. There there was approved by Attorney General. We, I can talk about this later on in this meeting, but. That should not be the final decision of whether it's approved or not based on the map. It's based on town actions, the town committees and by Attorney Generals.
I think we agree with that part of your point.
Town clerk, that she's going to pull out the the minutes of the meetings where these actions were taken and approved, not a map showing it.
Yeah, that's, that's fine, Fred. The the part about the. The public hearings, though, was not correct. The initially. The parcel was inadvertently omitted from the warrant and did not get voted on. So it was taken to a special town meeting, it was proper, it was advertised, the abutters were informed. The legal ads appeared. The Attorney General took exception because the legal ad did not indicate where. The map of the parcel could be found. And. So that was why the the Attorney General did not approve that particular zoning change. And that's why we're going through it again. But the abutters were informed. It was the other, it it was the fact that the legal ad didn't say you could find the. The map of the parcel at town offices was the problem.
I definitely remember a public hearing with the abutters, uh, with some of butters present.
Yep.
I still make the comment about the map, the map is not the final.
That's right, that's.
Yeah.
Okay, so I'm going to research the status of this and try to ascertain the. The the this, but I think for tonight, we're assuming the rezoning did not go through. So there were really two, these two related topics, one. Just the change of the zoning of the parcel. And two, what we're, I've still been sharing my screen, and and this is the part now that I'd like to. Find out from all involved, including Ms. Monahan. I thought we were tonight having a hearing, not only on the rezoning of the Monahan parcel. But that we were, we were proposing to add this. Um, definition of trucking and construction equipment services um, to the bylaws. Because this kind of use is. Uh, something that the Monahans would like to be able to do on that parcel in the future.
Actually, actually, I'd like to interrupt you, um, I really don't need that for.
Yeah, we've already decided to drop that, Brad.
Okay.
As far, as far as use, I bought, I bought the par, it it is trucking. I bought the parcel that abuts my son's property in his best interest, you know, that protects his future interests. That property. I would like it zoned commercial. If it hasn't happened, I would like it to happen. However, you guys need to do that. Um, but that's what we're requesting.
Okay, okay, so then.
As far as, as far as trucking and excavating, I mean, do you, you know, we have Amers trucking, we have Goulet trucking, we have. Murawski excavating, do you want to change all of that zoning affecting these local businesses? I don't think so. But if you guys want to go there, that's your choice.
They're existing, so there's not too much we can do about them.
They predated this, the but, the zoning. Okay, well, if you, if you're not. Feel, don't feel a need for this, then I I think we should just.
Yeah. So just to be, just really, maybe this is for my own benefit, because what just has come up is that. Businesses that were operating in town. For example, trucking and construction equipment services businesses, they were operating in town before the zoning bylaws went into effect. Were grandfathered and they can continue to operate for the indefinite future. But it would be different if a new business wanted to set up and operate. Create a new use of a, an existing parcel within, say, the commercial district. So I'm just. So this is when um, new businesses versus. Existing businesses would be impacted by what is or is not present in the zoning bylaws.
Okay, I would like to take up the portion where we approve. The change from. To a commercial industrial for the Monahan lot.
Okay. Do we, so we, so we have a motion and we know what the parcel is? I don't know it off the top of my head.
Let's go back to page one of this. We're still in a public hearing, so.
Yes, very good.
Don, are you going to be doing a commercial industrial or just commercial?
Uh, commercial, sorry. So this, the commercial was initially requested by Wendeloski. And then he sold it before, the the day before we had, we're supposed to have the meeting, public hearing. So. We are now proposing that changing the parcel twelve dash zero dash twenty four dash two on State Road. From egg one one to commercial. And that the town map already is, uh.
Go behind the lesbians.
Done, but. We'll include that anyway. Do I have a second?
Well, we can't vote now, we're still in the.
Sorry, any comment by the. Um, planning board at this point.
Well, comments from the public, I think, is it, is, it is true, I think that the. Parcel to the south is zone commercial, as is the parcel to the north.
Right.
What parcel to the north is commercial from this? I thought that's residential.
I think they're all commercial.
Could you please explain, Judy? I'm not, I don't see that everything on here is all commercial.
Okay, well, I take the parcel to the south is.
Right, okay.
Now, prior to that, it was commercial on the other side of the bridge.
Right.
Been that way for a while.
Not north of the bridge.
No, south of the bridge.
South of the bridge has been commercial for a long time.
Right.
It's north of Kyle Monahan's property, which is north the bridge. It abuts Kyle Monahan's property, right across from LaSalle.
Right.
And that is north of the bridge. South of the bridge has been commercial forever.
So does anybody have any objection to changing this to commercial? Any members of the board?
I would prefer it not.
Who was that?
That was Sandy speaking?
Yep.
Okay.
I'm on partial twelve zero twenty two. And twelve zero twenty one.
And could you elaborate on um, the nature of your objection, please?
Well, I'm residential. I know he's done a lot of work, he's working on putting a berm in to add privacy and limit the noise. Um, because right now with Kyle's stuff, with the trucks coming and going and starting and running at all hours of the night. Um, I'm just afraid that he'll end up doing the same thing on that particular spot, twenty four two.
Excuse me, but but for the minutes, wh- when we're saying he here, which party are we referring to?
Uh, Mr. Monahan for the, uh. The twenty four two lot.
But not, but not Kyle Monahan, but.
Kyle's business is already up and running. But it's he who, it's that property with the trucks coming and going, I'm just afraid. Twenty four two, if you change it to commercial, will also start later on with trucks coming and going at all hours.
Isn't that the property?
I need to comment here. I need to comment here, Sue Monahan. Kyle Monahan has one truck. That's all I'm gonna say. He has one truck that he drives that comes in and out. And, how about ninety one, this, this parcel is. Entrapped between ninety one and Route five and the exit from ninety one to Route five. There's at least two hundred, probably two hundred and twenty trucks that go back and forth between these parcels. And you're going to label Kyle Monahan? I don't think so. We have three acres next to him, we're buying, we have the parcel in his best interest. We're just confirming, we're not starting a trucking business. We've run a trucking business out of this town for twenty years. Twenty. We've served this town beyond anyone's belief. And now you have angered me, all right?
I don't understand why you're getting angry. All I'm trying to do is protect my property, my property value. That's all. And I understand why you would want it as commercial for future use. You don't need to be angry.
That future use doesn't necessarily mean trucking. It just means that commercial could be done on there.
Well, I think we've heard both sides of the argument.
Yeah.
Does anyone else have comments?
Yeah, if I, if I may, if it's commercial use, any commercial use is valid. Once it becomes commercial use, that's, that's the concern, I think, that the neighbor has. Is that once you're adjacent a commercial use. It's very difficult to change anything and all the, you know, I've seen what Monahan's doing, I know there's a lot going on there. And I can appreciate that they've helped, they've been involved in the town for some years now, but I, in the same token, you you have to consider. Everybody in town, not just business, not just the resident, you have to consider everybody. And if we turn.
I think it's. Rich, I think it's important to note that the, when Kyle Monahan. Went through his, got his business, he, his approval process was a little different than. Normal, and he didn't have a site plan review and he didn't have special permit. And as a consequence, didn't get a lot of the controls that normally would go on. I don't think that that's going to happen again.
But it did happen, and if it can't.
It did happen and it's been fixed.
I I I, as an advocate of Route five and people who live on Route five, not just in the commercial zone, but all the way down Route five. Cause eventually, uh, commercial zone may extend itself down. There's a lot of residential homes on Route five and we, as all of us who live on Route five, have the same benefits and rights, we should be able to be considered just the same. And I understand that commercials. Properties should be allowed to have some leeway and freedom to be able to run a commercial business, but you also have to consider rate. Consider uh, the 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 residential character of the adjacent lots. I just want to let be known.
Thank you.
Are we ready to take a vote?
Well, I think we need, if. We need to see if there's more comment in the close of the public hearing.
Any further comments by, from the public?
Excuse me.
Further comments from the board?
Are are you going to be voting on this as one item or two pieces?
Well, let's wait till we get to the vote, Mary.
Okay, I'm just a little, I sort of lost track of what happened at the conclusion of the part one discussion. Is it going to be?
We will get to the vote.
Oh, okay, okay.
We're still on a public hearing. I am now going to close the public hearing at six oh eight. And the board will discuss what we want to do.
So we'll first discuss the marijuana changes.
I move that we approve the marijuana changes as outlined in the. Document that. Grant has shown in as outlined in the proposed by law amendments. Including both the definitions and the table of use.
I will second that. Any further discussion? Take a voice vote. Don, yes? Judy?
Yes.
Brad?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Yeah, I move.
Um, Sarah?
Yeah, sorry, Sarah.
Sorry.
So Mary, you got that? We just voted on the marijuana courier delivery changes.
Yeah, both, both definitions and the table of use.
Definitions and table of use, as shown in what's posted at the website?
Yeah, the proposed by law amendments. I move we. We. Do not approve the addition of trucking and construction equipment services. Either the definition or the table of use.
I have a second.
I'll second that.
Hey, any further discussion? Voice vote, Sarah? Give me a thumbs up, Sarah. Don, yes? Judy?
Yes.
Mary?
Mary?
I'm sorry, Brad?
Yes.
And Tom?
Yes.
Okay, the.
I couldn't hear Sarah, but is everybody voting?
You voted aye, Sarah?
No, I voted no.
Okay.
Okay.
So you're voting, you you do think that that should be approved?
Okay, I'm sorry, I had a personal emergency, but.
Okay.
Diverted it. So what am I voting on exactly?
Um, not using, not sending to town um, meeting the truck, trucking.
We are removing the trucking portion.
Right.
Yes.
Yeah.
So what is going to happen? If. What needs to be addressed with this trucking commercials in construction equipment services? Cause this was definitely not addressed with the. Interesting predicament that happened with the initial property and it probably. Left an opening that what was going on, so.
I don't think it had anything to do with the initial.
Of course, we shouldn't be, theory, we may need to stop the vote if we're having a discussion.
Well, I just was unsure of what Sarah was voting, so we have four.
Think that, well, let me just clarify what I think we're, what I think we're voting on.
I'm sorry.
I've highlighted this term, trucking and construction equipment services. This definition and a, and this row in the table of use. Is not currently present in the zoning bylaws. There's no definition, no entry in the table of use. We were having a public hearing tonight on adding this definition and adding this row to the table of use. I think that we've arrived at possibly a consensus on the board. That no, we're not going to add this definition and we're not going to add this entry to the table of use. Meaning that there is no change. Meaning that there is no change. We're, we're, we're trying to vote to basically make no change to the zoning bylaws. However, I, I, maybe I should, I know we're mid-vote. But I think the absence of a definition of trucking and construction equipment services from the table of use. Would mean that if a new. You know, if a property owner in town in, in an appropriate district. Wanted to establish a new trucking, construction equipment services business on their parcel. They would be impeded, if not blocked, from doing so because there is no allowed use for that in the table of use. Is that an accurate statement, Judy?
We don't know that for sure. There was some suspicion that that might be the case, but we have not had a formal. Definition from the building inspector that that's true.
If, if that's the case, how, how could the Monahan property have got ahead?
Because they got it as a home occupation. That's a long story. We could fill you in later, but that one.
Yeah, I mean, you couldn't do that in a, on a, on a commercial property. So in some sense, um, feedback from, say, Rich would be. So we're, this is an example where the planning board is not explicitly expanding the list of. Approved commercial uses in town.
We were going to do this if the Monahans felt that they needed it. They told us that they don't need it. That was the instigation.
And so if they did it, if, if what they're doing is, is allowed as a home occupation, legitimate home occupation. That can continue. If it turned into a true.
Well, no, I think.
Okay, so, so Sarah, did that clarify for you?
Yes, so right now, if this is zoned commercial property. This. There is nothing on the table of use, if we take this off, that will allow that on a piece of commercial property either way.
If, if we take this out, it will be entirely up to the building inspector to determine whether it's an eligible use.
Per our current zoning.
Thank you for our current zoning.
Okay, then that is now a yes. Thank you for the further discussion.
Okay, so the, the motion passes unanimously.
Did Tom vote?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, and Judy was partway through making a motion to. Not to approve this zoning change.
Yes, so this is part three, right?
Right. So, Mary, this will be the, the motion that we got highlighted? That, okay with you, Judy?
So Judy made the motion. Yeah, so this is the rezoning of the parcel. Based on the assumption that it's, it had, it was not properly rezoned in the past.
Right.
And can, can I get some clarification? So based on what the vote we took about removing the trucking, does that mean that this, this lot? This rezoning to commercial could not become a trucking business. Unless the building inspector approves that use. Is that correct?
It.
Yeah.
That's what I, that was my understanding of the situation.
And normally the building inspector will. Call and ask me if he's got any questions.
Then it would require a site plan review and special permit as a commercial use.
Any further discussion?
Just one, one last question.
Okay.
Can, can, if, can that, can the business, the, the existing business be expanded? Across the property line?
I think it would be up to the building inspector who's the zoning enforcement officer.
And would, would that still change the use of this parcel such that it would require a site plan review? I think, Tom, you were, you were foreseeing the kind of amoeba effect, expanding. From the existing parcel into this newly rezoned parcel and kind of bypassing all the other controls. Is that what you were?
That, that's my question.
Yeah.
It, it shouldn't be allowed. It has been a problem in the past that very often. These things aren't picked up if there's no application for a building permit. But in this case, the parcel is so visible, I think that that would probably not, not happen.
And then it would put the party that did such a thing at financial risk of enforcement actions and fines.
Yeah, or redoing or whatever, but yeah, I think. Technically, it would have to happen. As I say, enforcement tends to be. The, the way most zoning bylaws are enforced is because somebody pulls a permit, um, but. It doesn't, it shouldn't be that way. And in this case, the parcel was very visible.
Any further discussion?
A building permit would only be pulled if a building was going up, not necessarily parking on an adjacent property, correct?
Correct, and that's why we all need to be vigilant.
I will ask one more time. Any further discussion? There are none, I'll call for a vote. Sarah?
Hang on, ask others.
Uh, Don, aye? Judy?
Aye.
Brad?
Aye.
Tom?
Opposed.
Opposed?
Yes.
I am also opposed.
Hey, the mercy motion passes with, um, three votes to two.
And before this, just, let me get this in so I'm not confused. We just had three votes or two. We.
Great.
The, okay, then I guess I'm in line. The first one was on the courier changes marijuana. The second one was about approving.
Yeah, there, there were two marijuana ones.
No, just, just one, right?
One marijuana, but it had two different.
One vote for two businesses.
Yeah. Uh, for two businesses, the second vote was to not add.
Wait a minute, wait a minute, please. I can't keep up with this. And if it's votes, it needs to be perfect, so. The first one was marijuana and there's only one of those. Or, or there are two, two of those, part, part one.
And marijuana delivery. And we voted. To add definitions and add them to the table.
Are you saying the two parts are courier is one part and delivery is the other? See, this is what I came in at the end of, I think. I was late here today, but.
We're adding two different business types to town.
Right, and once the courier and delivery is part of one chunk and one vote. Both of those things?
Yes.
Okay.
Alright, so, so Mary, we voted on.
And for that, it was unanimously yes. And it was to approve the proposal as it's shown on the document that's on screen. Right now.
Right, correct. And what that did is add definitions to the marijuana bylaw. And also added to uses to the table of use.
Those being courier.
Being the one I've highlighted on screen.
Courier and delivery are separate there. Yep, okay. Okay, that's vote one. Unanimously, yes. And then the second vote. Was the vote not to approve trucking and construction equipment services. To be, have definitions and table of use entry for that.
Correct.
And everybody voted yes, not to have it.
Correct.
Correct.
So nothing will change there. It'll stay the way it is. So the last one is to change the zoning of parcel twelve oh twenty-four-two on State Road. From. Agres one to commercial. We have three yeses and two opposed, so it passed three to two.
Right.
Okay, I'm straight on that.
Okay, now we're gonna have an update on landscaping at. Uh, on thirty-four Christian Lane.
Get away, Sarah.
Take it away. I, to some extent, need to recuse myself from voting on this one because I am in a butter. Um, but I will say that, um, I can give insight on that side, but Tom and I, two Saturdays ago. Uh, along with in a butter Gretchen Becta, took a walk around the property to verify what the landscaping. Had been done in comparison to the as-built and all, in the maintenance of it. And also in comparison to the two thousand and seventeen proposal way back when. Which is only on paper, but, um, and we found many plants not. Healthy in many portions and, um. There was nothing underneath the, um. Panels, which was interesting. Part of this was initiated because a screening tree that was part of the initial plans was cut in the week of December twenty-fourth to the thirty-first. And we were verifying that it had been returned. Um, and it's a lovely con color, small con color spruce. What else, Tom?
It hadn't been returned, right? It had been replaced.
Replaced, yes, it's not, yes, a live replacement was put in.
Was, was all the planting that had been required in the terms of conditions there.
I would say what hasn't, isn't extremely stressed and looking like it's going to perish. There are many, many. Um, not surviving, um. Landscape plants on.
It goes on the, the west and.
All sides.
Okay, but. It wasn't clear to me from driving by that on the west side. That all the plants that were on the. On the site, on the planting plan had actually been planted. They, you, you found them all?
No, there were dead ones. And how we put it on it is, the as-built is not how it is. Um, many more ilex, hollies are in the rear portion. And there are less arborvitae's in the front and that is now a wood. Slat fence on the first portion of the west side. And those are extremely stressed by water, anything that's there.
The general, the general condition is that the, other than the arborvitae, the plants haven't been maintained yet over time. And they're just simply not growing. If the intent was to develop, um, screening. It's, has not achieved that goal over a five-year period.
I, I guess I've, you, you made the maintenance. Part need for maintenance and replacement clear. I'm just curious whether. All the planting was done originally.
There is no plantings on the rear portion of the east side at all. There is no screening back there at all.
That was never in the plan.
And, and along the wetlands.
I thought all sides were screened. That's why I wanted to see the seventeen plan.
We didn't have a seventeen landscape plan.
Right, but our conditions.
Yeah.
There's all side should, not the rear, all side should have been screened to some extent. And only the very front portion of the east side is screened.
So I wanna make, I wanna sort of draw out the following conclusion, yes or no. First. Is it your view and Tom's view that based on what you're able to observe? Whately Renewables did not implement the landscape screening plan as required by the planning board?
It has not been satisfactory and it has not been maintained. The condition that most bothers me as in a butter is the condition about the poles and the location. That seemed to be completely disregarded.
Okay, so now there's three issues. The, there was. Number one. Did they originally plant landscape screening plants as required? Two, did they properly maintain those plantings and replace dead, dead. Um, landscape screening plants as required. And then there's this third issue about the. Um, location of the utility poles. So we'll come back to the utility poles. So. Based on what you're able to observe, is it your judgment? That the initial landscape planting was not, did not conform to planning board requirements?
Yes.
There's not adequate screening on the east side.
I, you know, could somebody bring up the conditions? Because I don't think we can enforce anything that's not in the conditions.
Sure.
And I'm not sure we can enforce all of that.
The conditions don't say exactly where, but it does say it's going to be screened.
Yeah, yeah. I live on the east side and I, I agree with Sarah. There, there isn't very much of anything. Either screening or landscaping on the east side. I think there's a difference here. The, I don't think the landscaping was meant as a screening device. I, I think that the screening is. Is the chain link fence with whatever fabric or, 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 or view blocking on there. The landscaping was more of an aesthetic thing and not there to provide screening.
It breaks it up, Fred.
Right, it breaks it up, but that wasn't. And I made, I made a comment to the, to the planning board. I, I think it was after this was all. All constructed that there was no consideration of the east side for property owners viewing it on the east side. It was all the, the other, the other sides and that should have been considered when it was site plan and approval review here. If you go to, um, can the conditions six, seven and eight are the ones that deal with vegetation.
Yeah, so I'm highlighting, yeah.
You'll see that there's no prescription there for how much, much planting is to be done. It just says it's supposed to be maintained.
We've certainly learned a lot in the last couple of years, haven't we?
Yes, we have.
So, the question now, is there enough screening there? That we didn't, the board didn't prescribe how much, how many plants should be done. And exactly where they should be done. But what it did say is where, where things are planted there to be maintained and cared for. And that's so that we, we have a basis for making an observation on that point because it is, it's one, it's condition number seven.
Yeah.
They plant the other two trees. The two west of the driver.
Yes.
The other two deciduous trees are in place.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, okay.
So I I'd like to ask if people would just hold what I'm screen sharing at this moment in their minds for a second. I'd like to switch when I'm screen sharing to the as-built plan we receive. Because I believe that um phrases like all plantings here in our conditions. Are legitimately interpreted with with reference to the as-built plan. Alright, so let me stop sharing this.
This is why I really wanted to see the original site plan where they listed. What they were planning for the plantings, not the as-built. Because this as-built, didn't this come about because they were. Wanting to put in. Battery storage?
No, I don't think so.
Predates me, but my interpretation, if we're looking here, like if you see where I'm highlighting. Trying to make that go away, but um this is the uh. You know, this is the side along Christian Lane. And to me, this looks like a series of plantings. Their indications of what they are going to be and how their locations and so forth.
The west is planted differently than this. There are many hollies. If you can come down just a small bit, Brian.
Come down like towards Long Plain?
Down so we can see the um. We wanted to see what the plantings are in the corner.
Sorry about that.
Nope, the other way, the other way.
Yep, I'm I'm with you. There we are.
So they're saying those clusters are going to be arborvitae in that portion that's directly west, not the northwest.
Right, like I see these little clusters of three arborvitae.
Those are not arborvitae. Those are much more, that seems that's where they put most of the holly on that portion.
Can I just say something there on that?
Sure.
Um, there was, yes, there were, originally there were arborvitae's there. Uh, the solar company came in next amp. The arborvitae's that were there were not healthy, so they replaced them with the hollies. That's why they're there. They they tried, they replaced them once with uh. Initially, the first round didn't take, so they replanted arborvitae's again. And that didn't take, so they came in and put hollies in. That's why the hollies are there.
And those aren't taking very well either.
Uh, well, there's another issue going on too, because if you noticed all the water that's there, that's another topic. Which I'm concerned about, but that's another issue at another time. But that's. I have a feeling why nothing's taking at the moment because there's. A lot of water there, which I'd like to uh do other things and I can't because of the water and it's not because of my doings.
Well, so Sarah and Tom, do you have any recommendations for? So you've, I think we've concluded that the. I think what I, at least I think what I'm hearing is that it's your view that at least the intent. Of the landscape screening plan has not been, you know. You know, between implement implementation and maintenance is not doing what it's supposed to be doing. Is that a fair statement?
Correct. Sarah, do you agree?
I agree.
I'll simply say when I go up and down Christian and I look over. You know, I see a few from a distance, a few bedraggled looking arborvitae's and basically I see. A lot of wooden fencing and the arborvitae's by virtue of being so sparse and so bedraggled. Just makes the whole thing look a little ridiculous. And when I think about all the efforts we've been making to require, say, our. Marijuana cultivators to, you know, screen their properties. I think if. If they were doing what I'm seeing with this next amp facility, I'd be extremely disappointed.
Another item that's of great concern for me because particularly with runoff and wind erosion that's. The wind erosion in the city in this particular area is high. There isn't. A crop under the panels. There is not a live grass.
Okay, it's supposed to be a pollinator mix, mix um grass under there.
And I'm pretty sure that was probably in their original. Site plan, but it did not carry over into this as-built and because it was in the original site plan, it wasn't conditioned. There needs to be something on the ground year round.
I see.
Can I just add on to that? That um last year they came in. Around fall time, I believe it was, but don't quote me on that, but they did next amp, meaning they, meaning next amp came in. And they. Chewed up all the grass that was there that grew after they. Um, put all the panels up and such and they came in and basically cultivated all that and. What they did is they did replant some type of grass that only grows maybe about two feet high at the most, if that. So I don't know between the harsh winter we've had and all this rain and with a another issue I have going on. Probably that's, it hasn't taken yet. But they came in and they planted new seed down, they straw, I I'm sure you've noticed the straw. All along that east side also that's on the lawn on the outside of the fence. So they came in last year, like I said, late and did all that.
I know they've been in recently, but they. Their version of planting grass seed is different than my version of planting grass seed.
I I agree with you, Sarah.
Um, this is very scattered, not well-covered and not at all scratched into the existing soil.
I I totally agree with you. A- as a landowner, I totally agree with you, Sarah.
Yeah.
I'm not a happy camper.
About a year and a half ago, we had a meeting with them online. And they were telling us that they were going to be putting in pollinators. And this was about the same time that the concrete pad showed up. Um, and I'd assume Jeff that maybe that was pollinators that they thought they were putting in, but. As you say, there are not much left of them.
Right, exactly. And they uh next amp hasn't really communicated from from the word go. With me, w- with the plantings and all that and such. Uh, basically, you know, I go to work, I come home and all this stuff is done. So there was big. Real lack of communication from the word go. But now recently, after time here, uh since twenty seventeen from the planning and all this. Uh, I finally got ahold of this individual, Skip Provost. I'm sure you've talked to him probably, Don. Um, I just got introduced to him uh last year. So actually, if I have a problem, I can talk to him, you know, at least I got somebody I can call and talk to. And take it up and so somewhere along the line, something can get done here. Otherwise, I was left in the dark. I'd go to work, I come home and, you know, I get, this is what I got for a planting.
Yeah, so I've been having exchanges of emails with Skip Provost around this. You know, and it it start, I got ultimately got to him around with the disappearance of the evergreen tree and its eventual replacement.
Uh, can I talk, can we talk about that tree?
Sure.
Okay, he he confronted, he called me uh this winter. It went missing. And well, like, well, okay, I see it missing. I'm like, alright, and I don't know what happened to it. And I spoke with Tom uh a few days ago. He doesn't know what happened to it. We don't know what happened to it, but meanwhile. Uh, next amp came back in, Skip called me during the winter and said, we're gonna come springtime, we're gonna replace it. Yeah, okay, no, yep, no problem. Um, so it got replanted, replaced, looks great, love it. I have a problem with it. A, it's on the neighbor's property mostly, but it is directly on the property line. So to be a friendly neighbor, I would like to have the tree planted on my property and not Mr. Barowski's property. For say, and basically it is right on the property line. So if he took a string or if we will. Tom or myself wanted to put a fence up, we cannot do that because it is directly on the property line, more so. Favouring his property.
Is there room to move it? Um, I guess this would be west. You know, um, onto your property sufficiently so that it. I'm just looking at this, this part of the plan. There's a road there. I think what you're saying is you like this. Tree moved um westward between the property line and the road. Such that when it gets bigger, um, it doesn't interfere with the road and and still stays with entirely. You know, its canopy stays entirely within your property lines. Is that accurate?
Uh, yes, I agree with you on that. Um. Uh. Roomwise. Uh, at now, yes, but as time goes on, I'm sure the tree gets bigger. I was wondering if we could re uh move it, relocate it to the, uh, let's see, south to the last pole. This way it's not interfering with the power lines for the power company. And also there's a drain line that's right where it's at. The roots will find the drain line.
Jeff, can I make a a suggestion?
Sure, Tom.
We originally had wanted them to put something up near your 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 property. You've got a tree where we've got that. Where it says a hundred and six, uh, one point six five one acres. The road there on your property. And I think somewhere down south, about the corner of the wetlands. Um, would probably be a better place because that's going to break up the view more. You've got a tree right by the the driveway, one about fifty feet up and wouldn't hurt to put another one, another fifty, fifty, sixty feet. North, uh, sorry, west.
Um, I don't have a problem removing the one that's there now. Uh. Where the uh where the poles are.
Yeah, the other two can stay where they are. They're fine.
Yeah, those are fine.
Yep.
If, the only thing I'm asking is if if anything, if we can move that, I'd be happy if we can move it ten feet onto my property. And put it there and be done with it.
Yeah. Okay. Um. But I. Comments from the board?
Other than that, uh, I know Tom doesn't care for the tree because I spoke to him a few days ago. Um, I don't care if I have the tree or not, but if I do have the tree, the only thing I'm asking is if we could put it. On my property and not his and not on the property line. Uh, like I said, that was lack of communication with the solar company. I come home at the end of the workday and I, it looks great and wonderful, but it's just right on the property line.
So I think we've got the message very clearly that Tom Barowski does not want this tree on his house. So we're going to make sure that happens. So I mean, I wonder, Sarah, since you're so closely located. Um, if, you know, you and Jeff could work out. A location and possibly drop a stake. My impression from Skip Provost is that if we tell Skip. Move this tree from here to there. He will get it done.
I am happy to work with Jeff with that, but I really do believe that. The Barowskis and the Bectas should be involved because that's much more their view. My view from my house. Is the rear portion of the east side and the Barowskis' house. Um, the Bectas actually view it directly. And the Barowskis, part of that was set up originally for the Farricks who owned it at that time.
A- absolutely. That tree was initially to pacify Irene because she didn't want to look at the telephone pole, so it's there. Like I said before, a little while ago, that I talked to Mr. Barowski a few days ago. It was on a Friday and. He didn't care for the tree being on his property, so now it's on his property. He can do whatever he wants with it, but he does not care for it to be on his property. He'd just rather see it gone and not be there at all, is what he told me a few days ago.
Part of having the evergreen was screening.
Yeah, right.
Right.
But but maybe the people who we thought we were screening whatever from really don't feel this is. Helpful or necessary.
I think you need to hear from the Bectas.
I suggest that.
Gretchen, go ahead.
Step back a bit.
Um, let me just say that the screening, the evergreen grew in such a nice manner. Um, before it did disappear, it kind of softened that first pole. Which has three hard boxes on it. So as you looked across the street. From any of my front windows, which is my entire living area. Um, I could see the pole, but the evergreen behind it kind of softened the fact that there's three hard. Large boxes. So if you do move it over. You know, it's gonna lose some of its screening purposes. I don't know if there's any other alternatives to it. That first pole does carry on the lower end a lot of hard surfaces. You wanna come stand on the yard, look down at my kitchen, my dining room, my living room, my front porch. All I see is poles, hard surfaces. And, you know, it had gotten kind of nice. You just didn't kind of notice the pole as much until it was gone. So I'm hoping some placement can help with that. I'm sorry.
About just the other side of the road, just move it straight west.
Um, you know, again, it was a background filter for me, uh, so. It if it moved down a little bit, it may help if it stays kind of fluffy. Um, you know, I agree, moving it completely down to like another area of the pole line would not do anything.
Yeah.
I suggest that we write a letter to Jeff Provost and say that we're concerned about the lack of maintenance. Of the existing vegetation. We're concerned about the lack of pollinators, grass under the panels. And that we would like. The evergreen relocated to a spot that's. More suitable. That the neighbors. Can agree upon, I phrase it better than that, but basically get it off off the lot line and to a spot.
If we can just move that tree, you know, like five or eight feet, just get it away from the line because it's gonna grow a little bit. I I'd be fine with that. Since that's initially what the plan was for anyway.
We'd get Gretchen her her um.
Why don't Gretchen, uh, Jeff and Sarah get together and decide on where it should go on?
Yeah, okay.
Okay.
Good.
So. And I can, I I strongly concur with Judy's recommendation that we write a letter. Obviously, the. We as a planning board don't have any enforcement authority. Um, and I think it's premature to turn this over to the building inspector and sort of refer it for enforcement. I think the first step is a letter, uh, an email, you know, a formal letter.
Letter, a signed letter.
Assigned letter, which we can transmit via email. Um, from the planning board expressing concern, not a threat, not a threatening letter.
I think, I think I would attach the. I would attach the um. Document that Sarah and Tom produced and say that we're concerned about these issues.
And I, in addition, I would ask that um the Jeff come and meet on site with members of the planning board to talk about it.
I think you mean Skip Provost or Jeff. Yeah, skip, yeah. Um, that may be a more challenge. I mean, we can ask, he he lives some distance away, but. And he may not be able to come personally, but but we can certainly make that request. Where where I was gonna ask next is would. You know, we've agreed that a letter needs to be written, which means somebody needs to do the writing. Is that something that, is that task something that Tom and or Sarah would be willing to take on? Drafting a letter um that we would then review and discuss, I think we would have to, just like your report. We would have to discuss it in a public hearing before sending it.
No, I don't think so.
You don't think so?
No, we've, we've outlined what we want to say. No, we've, we've outlined what we want to say. We have the basis, basic report.
I mean, I, I can certainly send you the word template that we've been using for letters and so forth. It would be good to have a lead author and then assume that the rest of us on the board will serve as proofreaders and. Polishers or, and enhancers. You're making a face there. You work in a physics department. I mean, you could throw formula in there.
I, I'd be happy to write the letter. I've got one that I can take and modify because I wrote a one three years ago.
Okay.
Thanks, Don.
Okay, I'll write the letter and then I'll send it to Sarah to you and then you can send it to Tom for additional comments. How's that?
Well, send it to all of us, please, Don.
Alright.
Okay.
And I think you should, you should indicate that you're attaching their, the result of their walk.
Right.
Alright, I would make, um, one, 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 three, three thousand foot, um, recommendation and that is. You know, we, we, we talk about bringing consultants to work with the board. On another number of issues, we did this, we talked about engineers with solar. Um, plantings and screenings has continually come up in the past couple of years that I've been on the board. It's a constant point of discussion. Um, I think we should be considering, uh, bringing in someone representing the board from an. Landscape architecture point of view. Um, so that we can be more specific in what we're asking and not leaving up to the judgment of the applicant. Um, to, to try to interpret what we're saying. I think we need to be more clearer in what we're directing in our conditions. The, the, the build, the applicants to are good to do, are good to do.
Well, at the time, we had kind of a landscape arc on the, uh, on the planning board and she made. A number of, of suggestions as to what, what it was. What was her name? Farrell?
Yeah, Helena.
Helena Farrell.
The problem was we didn't get it down on a plan, but, but it was very helpful having her because she was able to. To suggest specific types for wetlands, specific types for near the road and that kind of thing.
I think it's a, it's a good proposal and if we don't have organic expertise at that level on the board, there's the question of, you know. Could we hire and pay somebody on a consulting basis to?
We certainly can. We can get experts for this, just like if we're doing it again, we should get experts. To consult on the position of the poles, which.
Right, right.
Which we were.
Misled.
We relied on their good, goodwill and it was a mistake.
So I, I'm aware, you know, it's almost seven. Uh, we have one more item with Larry Brotherton and I, so I, but I don't wanna. I want to make sure we're, we're come to some closure for the evening on the weighty renewable site. Jeff. Uh, you mentioned, you know, other concerns you have. Is that something we should need to take up tonight? Or is that something for a future meeting? I gather related to the water that's accumulating.
Yes, um. I like to, I don't know where to start or if I could start with you folks, if I should start at the select board. But at some point, I'm sure I'd like to meet with the highway department, Mr. Bardwell. And others in to deal with a drainage issue that we have on Christian Lane.
That's, I think that's better start with Keith.
Yeah.
So I think I need to start with the select board, then at some point, the next avenue would be calling him in after the select board meeting. So the, the, the phase of meetings to go along.
Well, Keith's pretty open. I would talk to him personally before I go to the select board.
Okay.
You know, what I'd say from, you know, where I sit on the planning board is that as you're, these kind of conversations go forward. If there are things that you were learning or pieces of advice, you feel it need to be shared back with the planning board as we consider. You know, future solar kinds of installations and applications, anything like that would be very helpful.
I, I'd be helpful if I will, if the solar company would communicate with me better and. Anybody that's wants to take a tour on my property, I'd like to be notified of that as well.
I mean.
Especially being a property owner, taxpayer, landowner.
Yeah, consider including some of this in your letter. My impression is at least for now, I, I don't know how long this Skip Provost has been in position in this role.
I, I don't know.
But, uh, what I can say is from the moment I got in communication with him related to that evergreen tree. He's been very responsive.
Yep.
Um, you know, whether, what that really means about the future relationship and. You know, maybe if they find out that he's very responsive, they'll fire him. I don't know. But, um, but so far it seems like he's been trying to do the right thing and stay on the right.
You know, that's the impression I get on it as well.
Yeah.
Hey, let's move on to, uh, talk to Larry.
One last question for Jeff. How can we contact you to set up when we do go onto your property?
Uh, you can call my cell phone.
Cause Next Am probably has rights of way.
Yeah, they just have the, uh, right of ways to do what they need to do. That's why that roadway is in there for, yeah. Um, you can call my cell.
I mean, I'd like to make sure if we do another site walk or when meeting with Gretchen, we can.
Absolutely. Uh, you can call my cell phone number. I can give it to you right now if you'd like.
Thanks, Jeff.
Let me know when you're ready.
Yep.
Okay, four, one, three.
Yep.
Nine, nine, two, seven, nine, four, four.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thanks, Jeff.
You're welcome.
Okay, let's move on to the, uh, last part.
Yeah, so Larry Brotherton, you're, you're still out there. Can you hear us?
I can hear you. Can you hear me?
I hear you now. Okay. Um, so maybe since I've been interacting with Larry, I'll just do a little table setting. Uh, so I'm grabbing the paperwork here. So Larry Brotherton is here tonight. He, uh, represents or is a principal at Tight Line Properties LLC. He operates a landscaping company. He submitted an application for site plan approval. For a, um, Larry, I, I believe the parcel is currently undeveloped. Is that correct?
Uh, that would be correct, yes.
Okay, so, uh, the, the address of the property is eighty-three State Road. So we're not, tonight, this is just an informal conversation. This is not a public, it's a public meeting, but it's not a public hearing. Um, the purpose of our conversation with Larry tonight is to just get some questions asked and answered. Sort of informally between us, the planning board and Mr. Brotherton about his, uh, site plan appro, uh, request. Uh, possible, ideally, potentially tonight, at least make agreement on scheduling a formal public hearing. For the site plan review, uh, making sure tonight that, uh, Mr. Brotherton knows. Uh, we've had a chance to discuss what he's currently submitted. Uh, along with his application for site plan approval and, uh, give him any feedback that's necessary. As to the completeness, uh, inadequacy of what he submitted for the, uh, site plan review. So that's what we're doing tonight.
So what we've received to date has been, um, some front and side elevations and floor plans. For the building or buildings, can't remember, is it two buildings?
Yeah, let me, I can clarify a little bit about, because we've had, I'm just bringing up the, uh. The electronic documentation. I can share my screen in a moment. Um, we've of course received the site plan, uh, review application form. We've received, um, documentation on the septic plan. Which looks like we have a five-page document on the, um, septic onsite sewer plan. Because again, it's an undeveloped parcel at the moment. And we've received some. Um, images that provide, which I can now, let me share, I'm gonna share my screen. So. We've received some images. Of the proposed structure to be built. And it's, you know, we've got detailed plans on the structure itself. These images, I don't know, Larry, are you just on a phone or are you on Zoom so you can see what I'm sharing?
I, I, I can see what you're, you're sharing. I am on Zoom, yeah.
Okay, very good. So this is. So this is one image, this is another image and I can go back and forth as people request. But the, this would, I guess, be the plot plan or site plan that Larry has submitted. Along with his application. And I think this is the extent of, uh, what he's given us.
And just for context, to the right of the, um, the hedge on the right side is where one call does it all. Is located.
That's correct, yep.
Okay, so to the right of this hedge in the diagram.
Right.
So this is, uh, parcel thirty-five dash one.
Okay. Alright. Um, so we had there, I'm sorry, did I hear somebody speak?
Yeah, I think that what we'd like to see rather than an oblique view like this is an actual. Plan showing the property lines and then you've got some distances on there. Uh, but something just a bit more formal than this.
I think it actually need a, an engineering kind of plan.
Could I, um. Previous site plans that have come before the board are in fact public records, right? I'm thinking. Would it be helpful to Larry if I showed an example of a previously reviewed and approved site plan? I mean, we don't have one for this kind of operation, but like, I was thinking showing them the sovereign builder's plan or something like that, just to give. An illustration of what we're looking for. Is there any reason why I shouldn't be sharing here?
No, not at all. Also, he, he should be familiar with the list of site plan requirements in the zoning, which, which detail. The information that's, that's required.
Yeah.
But in this case, since it's on state road, you're gonna have to deal with curb cuts and turning radiuses and things like that, that. Um, don't always, don't always apply.
So I went to, uh, the contractor there using, um, the excavation work.
We're, we're having a little trouble hearing you, Larry. Could you maybe get closer to your microphone or speak up a little bit, please?
Um, is this any better?
Yes, that's better. Thank you.
Okay, so, uh, the excavating company that I hired, um, has already went to, uh. The, um, DOT and, uh, has requested a curb cut from them already. So, and, uh, as far as I know, they are approving it. So, I don't know, that's, that's where I'm at at that point. Um, when I had the design made up by your guy, uh, she, I thought. That was the building plan itself. I thought that was sufficient. Um, you, you're saying that I need more of an engineer. Plot line.
Let me show you an example of the kind of, um, detailed plan. That we've received from, say, a different applicant.
Yep.
So this is an example where you, you know, this is an engineering level plan where. Uh, parcel boundaries are shown, so it's a, it's a view from above. Uh, you see, you know, relevant, uh, topological lines, issues of drainage. Where new structures are going to go. Um, so that the images, the, the, the three D. You know, elevations are not really what we normally are, are able to work with.
Okay.
We need to see things like lighting locations, um, and numbers of parking spaces. Um, landscaping, as you've just heard ad nauseam, um.
The land.
Yeah.
Any, any, um. Any land engineer does these routinely.
Yeah.
We need to show the, the types of zoning, it needs to indicate the zoning, uh, with. Um, setbacks. Things like that.
Yeah. And this is actually the one that I'm showing here from a, a proposed self-storage facility. This was one built, to be built on state road, so there was also indications of curb cuts and. Um, and, you know, all that sort of thing. So this would be the model to aspire to. Um, to sort of ensure that the site plan review goes smoothly.
You might also send him the, one of the Sugarloaf Shop, uh. Marijuana retail.
Oh, sure. That's good. Okay. Maybe I'll, we'll just come back to this other, um, point. So on the application for a site plan approval. The Larry, Mr. Brotherton described the proposed use as follows. Equipment storage for landscaping company with two offices. And we were, now those of us who sort of looked at that, we're scratching our heads a little bit to. Understand how this fit within the existing zoning bylaws table of use. I had a little exchange of email with Mr. Brotherton about that. And so, Mr. Brotherton, would you, um. You know, share with the board your assessment of what, uh, what the, what your proposed use would be. As, um, as, as described in the existing table of use.
Yeah, so I, I don't know if you got my last email, um, but I, uh.
I did get your email, but that was just simply between you and me, so I'm doing this for the benefit of the public.
So what I, what I found was that I really, I tend to seem to fall into by the bylaws. Under what I understand, um, would be that I, I fall into. One seventy-one dash eleven.
Yep.
On page B, so, um, and that. You know, I will not be living in the establishment, you know. It, um, it, it says that business services and supply services establishment. I, you, you know, uh, automobile parts, office equipment, maintenance services. Contractors, tradesperson shop, or craft workshop conducted entirely within the building.
Unless. Hold, hold on a second. I'm, I'm, I'm a little puzzled here. So you're saying that you're. You believe your use is, is what we define in the zoning bylaws as an accessory use?
An accessory use, I'm not.
Well, because you referred to one seventy-one dash eleven in the zoning bylaws.
Yeah.
And that so section speaks about accessory uses.
Yeah, so.
And so that, I don't think that's where you want to go.
That's under home occupation.
Yeah, yeah, that's not, that's not what this is.
Yeah, it's definitely not a home occupation at all. I mean, this is a zone commercial parcel. So, um, I'm really not sure where I fall there in, in the bylaws because there's no. As I read through, I didn't, I could not find anything that, um. But maybe since you guys are more familiar with it, maybe there is something.
I had some difficulty too, although it seems to me that your, your use is a perfectly legitimate commercial use and.
Yeah.
Would make a lot of sense. I'm, I'm thinking maybe the first place to go is to talk to the building inspector and ask his opinion.
Okay.
Cause he would have to issue the building permit.
Yeah.
Um, that, I'll talk to the building inspector on that. Um, because I mean, the, the nature of my business is, you know, I have. Uh, I have one office assistant and then I use my own office and I have. Um. A, a couple other. a, a couple of other employees that work in the field, you know, and that can vary on how much workload I have. Usually it's only, at any given time, I employ, uh, you know, three to five people. So it's not a whole lot of traffic that will be coming out of the area. Um, it's really the, the leave in the morning and they don't come back until about three thirty, four o'clock in the afternoon.
So I just want to put out there the idea, I, I, I agree with Judy's recommendation that getting the opinion of the building inspector is your best first move. But I might suggest that you consider, or that this be, this end up being considered a professional office. There is in the table of use under commercial uses, um, a, a, a valid use for professional and business offices. Including but not limited to medical, legal, banking, insurance and real estate unless qualifying as a home occupation. And, you know, including but not limited to a number of, you know, professional, I, I see no reason why a, um, you might say that the weightily headquarters of a landscaping company couldn't be considered a professional office.
My one concern is chemicals or fuel storage.
Yes, that's right. So the part of this that was a little concerning um, is the, you know, equipment storage and all that that might entail.
Yep, so, um, I, you know, I use small equipment. So, um, I don't, I don't do any long fertilizations or any of that, you know, so there are no chemicals that I use. Um, I'm, you know, I'm very much a organic company. So, um, you know, so that there is no, yeah, I don't. And, and truth be told, the reason I stopped using chemicals is because I had a hose break and it went across my face and I got a chemical going through it. And at that point, I was like, I'm done. So I don't, I don't do that anymore, you know. Um, I'm sorry, what was the second part of that question?
Fuel storage for your equipment.
Uh, yes. So I don't do fuel storage for my equipment. They, um, they go to the gas station. They all have their own card that they fill up on and that's, that's how I run it.
Yeah.
So.
Yeah, those are the items that would need to be addressed with the building inspector in case there were. Because I mean, even organic chemicals, if you do use those, are also, um, water supply and stuff. Those are also susceptible.
On page ten of the table of uses, we've got other light industrial uses not involving use of hazardous materials, is, this whole activity and no offensive injurious or noxious, noxious hazards.
Right.
So that's on, under light industrial on page ten.
I see. So, and that's a special, a special permit?
Yeah.
So that would require, yeah, that would require the ZBA, right, Don?
Um.
In a commercial district.
Yeah, I think it would, yeah.
I think for, for any kind of commercial thing like that, you'd need a special permit anyway.
Okay. Um. Alright. So, um, let me see. So I will need some engineering plans. I'm going to reach out to building inspector, talk to him about, um, chemicals and, uh, the fuel. But, um, and then, um, yeah, I guess that's it.
I think that's true. I, I, I'll just hold on one more second, Sarah. So I think we've, we've offered two, uh, ideas or options for what the best characterization of the proposed use. But I think you still need to get the opinion of the building instruct, i- inspector. If, if it were, if the building inspector could agree that it were a, you know, professional office. You know, uh, understanding there's going to be storage of material and equipment. Um, that at least would not require a special permit in the commercial district. It's allowed by right. However, it still requires planning board review and approval. If it were a professional office. However, if, if it were more like what Don suggested, meaning it was a light industrial use. Then it requires a special permit, meaning Larry, that you would have to have a hearing and a, a meeting and a hearing with the zoning board of appeals to obtain that special permit before you could use this, um, parcel in this way.
Okay, I, um, so, yeah, that, that makes sense to me. So, um, I am, you know, in light of all of this, and I really appreciate you guys' time. And so, thank you for that. Um, but on a side note, um, I am currently operating at a facility in Hatfield where, um, I got a knock on my door, uh, a week ago, or maybe a week and a half ago. Um, from the sheriff's department and I am being addicted, um, because the homeowner has, um, not paid his mortgage. So it's been taken over by the bank. So I am trying to do this. I know there's, you know, we have to follow the rules and the bylaws and all that. But, um, if there was any way to have this go a little bit faster, um, that would be greatly appreciated. I need a place to operate.
So I, a, a couple of questions. Um, I, I totally appreciate the desire to move this possible. How, how, how much we can help with that remains to be seen. I, it seems possible that we, the planning board could schedule a public hearing as early as, I think Judy, we could potentially have a public hearing in two weeks' time. Is that, or no, we have to, because we need enough time.
To be advertised for two weeks.
Yeah, okay, alright.
Before, so even if we could get it in this week, the earliest we could do is three weeks. But as of the day that the legal hearing, legal ad appears, we would need to post the plan.
Ah. Okay.
So, so the public could see the, the plan.
So the plan has to be available for that two-week period.
Also, the plan has to go out to all the other boards and committees so they can comment. We need the approval of the board of health. We'd need, you, you know, it's.
Yeah.
It's, it's, it's not that easy, unfortunately.
Yeah.
Transparency is cumbersome.
Yeah. Um. So I don't, yeah, and, and so it does sound like we're not even tonight able to, I mean, the, the real question, Larry, is that there are things that you would have to prepare and deliver like these, that, you know, this complete engineering plan and so forth. And we'd have to have that in hand, ready to be posted at least two weeks before the public hearing.
Yeah, so.
Um, it might be that if he could get a preliminary sketch with a lot of these details on it without necessarily having the engineer, we could post that, but it would have to include things like the septic and the lighting and, and, you know, to be a little more formal at least. But I, I'm not even sure about that. It's it's not a trivial, uh, structure and occupation, really. I mean, it is and it isn't. I, I, I don't know, but I think we need something fairly fairly complete to post so people can see and along with the description of the business. A, a written description, what would be there. Hours of op, operation, types of equipment to be stored, that kind of thing.
Yeah.
I guess I'll also ask this question, Larry. Right now, this parcel at eighty-three State Road is undeveloped. It's just, you know, grass. So it, even if you had to move your equipment tomorrow from Hatfield to this parcel, there won't be a building there. So, um, it seems like we're really, I, I mean, there's a the, the various boards and committees can try to move this through their processes as fast as we possibly can, but it, it's still going to take you some time to even get a building built for this on this land.
Yep.
So you're really in a situation, seems like you, there's a question that I don't know whether the planning board could even answer this. It's like, how can you use this parcel of land on a temporary basis starting very soon? You know, you know, like, can you put a couple of storage pods down and move your equipment there and just store them in pods on this land? I don't know if that would make sense, but I don't know what's, what kind of, what the town would allow for such temporary uses without permanent structures.
Yeah, I think that's beyond our purview, Brad.
I believe so too.
I mean.
Again, I think maybe the building inspector might help, but I, I'm not quite sure where that question would fall.
Yeah. So we really have to focus on what we can do in the, with the planning board. And so I, I think our, we can schedule a public hearing as quickly as we have a complete, uh, unacceptable package of plans to review from you. So, so it's most important, Larry, that you leave tonight feeling that you've gotten clear feedback from us and understand that feedback about what's needed to have a complete application for review.
Yeah, I mean, I think it's very clear feedback that, you know, I need an engineering plan and then, you know, to talk to the inspector, building inspector to find out where I really fall, um, in those bylaws. So, um, yeah, I, I think that's, that's pretty clear. Um, and as far as, you know, maybe moving over there or putting in a storage container or something like that, I mean, those are non-permanent structures, so I don't, I don't really see where that would fall into.
Yeah. It does.
So.
Yeah, that's outside of our scope.
Yeah. And so, okay. Yeah, but I think, I think I have everything that I need. Thank you. I appreciate it.
I'm sorry it's so complicated, but that's life. It's, it's for everybody's protection. You'd be happy if the guy next to you were going through this too.
Yep, so honor hands up the roof.
Alright, stay in touch and I'm happy to, you know, I can respond to emails and, you know, help, help you do this. Just keep me informed when you're ready to move forward.
I will. Thank you very much.
Okay, very good. Thank you. Good night. Alright, what else is on our agenda? So I think we got the email about the minutes, Mary. So, so.
Oh, I have one great, great quick update. Uh, Brian Domina told me yesterday that John Baroness has withdrawn his applicant, request for rezoning. It will not be on the, on the warrant.
Oh, interesting. Okay. Okay. So I don't think we have any, so I think we're into the additional items, not anticip, well, Larry was an additional item, I anticipated.
I think we're ready to adjourn.
Don, what do you think about that idea? You're, you're muted. You, you can't, you have to unmute if we're gonna really adjourn. I was having trouble muting.
There, now I'm muted.
Okay.
Yeah, entertaining emotion.
Motion, adjourn.
Have a second. All those in favor, Don? Yes, Brad?
Yes.
Um.
Yes.
Judy?
Yes.
Sarah?
Yes, please.
This meeting is adjourned.
Okay, and we're having our next regular meeting in May, is that correct? As far as we know. Just reconfirm.
Yeah, what's? I may be running you from another state.
Thirty-first.
The thirty-first. Thirty-first of May.